Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, July 14, 2014. If you'll stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mayor Protan Sloan will lead us.
Would you please join me in saluting our pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Mayor Protan Sloan.
Here.
Councilman Levitt.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Shanks.
By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Do we have an approval of the agenda, or does anyone want to pull something? I have a motion to approve.
Move.
Second.
Please vote. That's five zero to approve the agenda as is. Now is the time for presentations and recognitions. And tonight, I would like to begin with National Night Out. That will be on August the 5th. And this year, it will be hosted at the Target Center, August 5th, over on Seal Beach Boulevard. National Night Out is a program that encourages residents to recognize the importance of preventing crime and promoting awareness, safety, and neighborhood unity. At this time, I would like to introduce and bring up Corporal Mike Henderson, who will be receiving the proclamation on behalf of our Police Department. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Deaton, Council. Just a few minutes of your time to talk to you about this great event we're having, August 5th, at the Target Center, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. National Night Out is a national initiative where over 37 million people in 16,000 communities will take a stand against crime and showcase their public safety agencies and an opportunity for everyone to come out and enjoy that. I encourage everyone to come by the Target Center. We'll be doing this in partnership with Target, who is the national sponsor, and the Los Alamos Police Department. Our friends at the lifeguard, in lifeguard service, the Naval Weapons Station, and many other public safety entities will be coming and presenting that night. So please to come on up to the Target Center and join us for a great night out of fun for National Night Out. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporal Henderson. Next, I would like to introduce Gary Hewitt, who will talk about the Bicycle Loop Project, and then he will introduce Sarah King and Dennis Mark to give an update about the West County Connectors Project.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Gary Hewitt. I'm the manager of Transit and Non-Motorized Planning for the Orange County Transportation Authority. Tonight, I'm here to talk about a project called the OC Loop. It's a project that we're really excited about at OCTA, and I hope after the presentation tonight, you guys will be just as excited as we are. This is a presentation that we're going to be making to cities along the entire project, and I'll go into that in a little more detail. Also with me tonight is Paul Martin, who's in the audience. He's going to be the lead on the project. This is actually his first day at OCTA, so we spared him from having to do the presentation tonight. Okay, so what is the OC Loop? The OC Loop is a vision for a 66-mile, mostly off-road bike path, and also a walking amenity that improves the quality of life, supports freedom from car dependency, and promotes healthy living. The major segments of the projects include the following areas, and I'm going to kind of show you up here on the map. The top portion is the planned Union Pacific Right-of-Way Trail through the cities of La Habra, Brea, and Placentia. Also in this yellow area is the Yorba Linda Recreational Trail through the cities of Yorba Linda and the county of Orange. It also includes the Santa Ana River Trail from the city of Anaheim all the way down to the beach, the Coastal Trail from Huntington Beach up to Seal Beach, and the San Gabriel River Coyote Creek Trail from the beach all the way back up to the city of La Habra. This map also shows the dashed areas are areas where there's gaps in the loop, and the blue area on the bottom is the area we're looking at making enhancements. So 70% of the loop is already in place. And there are several vital segments that need to be completed to fulfill the entire vision. As you can see in the photos here, the part that's in place is used by thousands of people every day. It's heavily used by bikers, walkers, and runners. It also attracts diverse users, including families, students, seniors, fitness enthusiasts, and commuters. So why is the OC Loop important? Well, here's the project benefits we've outlined: improved quality of life, expanded transportation options, safer journey, and economic efficiency. And I'll go really quickly through those benefits. So a major factor in the quality of life is access to recreational opportunities and the ability to walk and bike within your neighborhood. The loop serves approximately 650,000 Orange County residents, in addition to visitors and residents across the county line in Los Angeles County. It provides them an opportunity if they're seeking a refuge from the traffic and noise of urban life. It also provides connections to many local and regional connections, including 200 parks and 180 schools. So the loop also provides expanded transportation options by providing first- and last-mile connections to our bus system, as well as to two MetroLink stations. It's another transportation option for residents and visitors who want to connect to local parks, beaches, and shopping areas without having to worry about traffic or parking. And also, with minimal stops and crossings, it's also a viable commuter route to the many employers that are located along the loop. So paths like the OC Loop attract and serve users of all ages and skill levels. On the picture here on the left is an example of Huntington Beach, of the existing conditions on PCH, and when there's some construction going on, you can see how difficult it is for a bicyclist. It's certainly not a situation I'd want to take my kids through on their bikes. And so what we're looking to build is a low-stress biking and walking route that is suitable for ages 8 to 80. And then also, let's talk a little bit about economic efficiency. So completing the loop mostly uses underutilized space along riverbeds and railroad rights-of-way, and turns them into a community amenity. And I mentioned earlier, 70% of the loop is already completed, so completing it leverages that existing investment that we have. Studies have shown that trail projects are associated with growth in property values, increased retail spending, and also can attract new businesses. So not only is this an asset for residents of your community, but it also provides a way for residents of nearby communities to get to your local attractions and businesses. So as OCTA does not build or maintain bikeways ourselves, we look to the cities and the county to complete the design and construction of the rest of the loop. The county of Orange, through a grant received from SCAG, is working with the cities along the loop on a feasibility study for each of the segments that is either unbuilt or needs to be improved. The study at the end will provide the cities grant-ready documents that they can use. It will provide them a design concept, costs, and next steps. And I'm going to go through a little bit here as to what this means in Seal Beach. So there are three segments in Seal Beach that we're going to talk about. And I want to point out at this point that we've also been working with your city staff on a recent bikeway feasibility study that OCTA conducted, and it includes looking at some of these alignments through the city. And the county study is going to pick up from there and kind of take it to the next step. The first segment is Segment L, which is 1.6 miles of Pacific Coast Highway from the city of Livingston to Seal Beach Boulevard. And what we're looking to do there is to improve an existing Class II bikeway. I'm trying to make that a little bit safer. The second, Segment M, is 1.6 miles connecting from PCH and Seal Beach Boulevard to the San Gabriel River Trail. Right, this map shows it going down Electric, Marina, and First. That's still open to kind of whatever the local community, and working with them, would like to see. That's just one possible alignment, and other alignments could be considered by the city based on input. And the last section here is N, which is the existing San Gabriel River Trail. So let's talk about funding. Whoops. It messes up on the funding slide, because this is where it gets complicated. The good news here is there is funding. So let me talk about that. So OCTA has a Bicycle Corridor Improvement Program. That money is available, our board sets aside 10% of our discretionary, some discretionary federal CMAC money for bicycle corridor improvement, and we've done that to the tune of about $4.5 million a year. In addition to that, an exciting recent development is the state's Active Transportation Program. They recently had a call for projects this spring, and they're going to be having a follow-up call later this year. And through that program, over $300 million is available statewide. And some of the loop sections are actually getting completed by grants that we at OCTA have given out for the Coyote Creek portion of it, as well as the UP Right-of-Way through the cities of La Habra and Brea. Those have been awarded grant funds through this program. So what are the next steps for the OC Loop? We ask that your staff continue to work with OCTA and the county of Orange on the feasibility study, and that'll go through the end of this year. We'll have a bike ride to highlight a section of Coyote Creek that will open up this fall in Buena Park. We'll also be having an OC Loop Summit in late 2014 to discuss the status of each segment. And elected officials and stakeholders will be invited to attend this meeting to provide input. And as cities can move forward with implied for design and construction funding as it becomes available. So how do you stay in the loop? So we have a project website that should be up later this week. It'll provide an opportunity for the public to sign up, to get email updates. We'll have an interactive map that shows the entire loop. You'll be able to zoom in on each segment and find out the current status. We'll have a project brochure, and also, we're working on a video right now, which will highlight the existing trail and the benefits of the project. And this is the link to the website. And that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, and if not, we can work into the next presentation.
Do we have any questions regarding the OC Loop?
I have a question. Right now, we're 70% complete. If we wanted to get on the trail I ride at San Gabriel River, you couldn't go all the way around at this point. Is that correct?
Correct. If I can go back a little bit here and show you on the first map here. There's the gaps going north on San Gabriel River kind of split off where Coyote Creek and San Gabriel River split right now, on the north portion of the map there. So kind of in the city of Buena Park. So the county is going to complete a segment there, but there's a lot of additional segments. There are some real kind of hard segments to complete in that area, like crossing the 5 freeway and also the rail corridor. So those are going to be some kind of heavy lifting projects that need to be done in that area. Across the top, the UP Right-of-Way Trail is also one that's largely unbuilt at this point, but that's, there's a lot of progress being made on that. The city of Brea has dedicated a lot of money to completing a portion within their city.
Any projected timeframe on when the entire project will be completed, where you can make a 70-mile, or 60, what, 66-mile loop? Is that right?
66-mile loop. One of the things that we'll get from that feasibility study is kind of a schedule. So for each segment, we'll have kind of the next steps and a schedule, kind of under a best-case scenario of what would happen: design, construction, you know, some of these, also getting funding, too. So it can take, it's a several-step process. So we'll outline kind of for each segment how feasible it is, and maybe kind of a near-term, long-term. Some of them are getting done really quickly. You know, like I said, there's a section that's going to open up this fall. Other sections, the cities are just kind of learning about it, or maybe even haven't bought into completing the segments. So that's part of the purpose of this presentation, is go around, kind of show the vision to all the cities, and kind of see if they'll kind of take the projects and move with them to complete the loop. So we don't have a definite date, but I think at the end of our feasibility study, we'll have some more information. That should be helpful for that.
As an avid biker, I'd be more than happy to help you dig some ditches or whatever to get this thing really moving. I'm really looking forward to it.
Great, great. I think participating in our workshop in the fall, and also, we're going to have the bike ride in the fall also. So keep you guys informed about that.
Any other questions? All right, we're ready for the next.
All right, so now we have Sarah King to talk about West County Connectors.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah King. I'm the Community Outreach Representative for the West County Connectors Project at OCTA. And I'd also like to introduce our project manager, Dennis Mack, in the audience, as well as one of our newest team members to the Community Outreach Group, and that's Nicolette LaPiana. So just want to say thank you for having us here. As part of the West County Connectors Project, oh my.
Same thing happened there. That's a quick presentation.
You know, it's that one and done. Could you go back one more, please? Thank you. I know the West County Connectors Project doesn't need too much of an introduction, but it's a $277 million project, and it's linking quadruple lanes on the 22, 405, and 605 freeways. And as you and your community know all too well, we've been under construction since late 2010. But I'm here happy to report that we are in the home stretch and looking to be completed by November, by late November of this year. And really, as we wrapped up 2013, our project team focused on three major items. That's the completion of the Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge, the east half portion, as well as the 22, 405 connector, and the 405, 605 HOB connector. So here are just some of our timelines that we've got. I'll start with the good news in this project. As of July 26, we'll actually have our ultimate configuration for the new Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge, and that's four northbound lanes and three southbound lanes. So as you know, we started the construction for the Seal Beach Bridge reconstruction in late 2012. It took us about one year to complete the west half of the portion. Crews shifted over to the east half, and that's where we are today. So as of July 26, which is a Saturday morning, commuters will have a brand-new, fully widened bridge to be able to travel on. In addition to these lanes, we do have bike lanes on both sides of the bridge, as well as a sidewalk on the west half, and a sidewalk on the east half. Here are just a couple of shots that our crews recently took out in the field. Last Monday, our crews did a closure pour to actually physically connect both the east half and the west half of the bridge. So officially, in the bridge depths, if you will, the bridges are connected. So we're really just ready to open it up to traffic and for commuters to use. But with the good news comes a couple of growing pains. And we're actually going to be closing the northbound loop on-ramp to the 405 freeway from Seal Beach Boulevard. So that's really at the intersection of Old Ranch Parkway and Seal Beach Bridge. This is estimated to be about six to eight weeks long, which we understand is a significant impact, but we do have detours in place. And quite frankly, the footprint of the existing ramp that folks are traveling on today really mirrors what the new ramp will be. And so in order for us to be able to reconstruct the new on-ramp, tie it in with the new configuration of the bridge, and the main line part of the northbound 405, that closure is required for us to be doing the grading, the paving, the electrical work, as well as the drainage work. Now, one of the questions that we often get is regarding the merging distance. When you get onto this on-ramp and you merge either to the main part of the 405, if you want to continue north to the 605 or even 7th Street, it's just a little bit, it's a little too short for commuters. This is a temporary configuration, and once the new on-ramp is completed, that merging distance actually doubles. So we understand, you know, that there's always growing pains with our construction projects, but after the eight weeks, we do hope that that mitigates a lot of the commuters' concerns and your residents' concern. We do communicate our detours on an interactive Google map that we update in real time, and that can be found at OCTA.net/WCCDetourMap. So this is just a really quick snapshot of our detours. I won't run through all of it, but we understand that, you know, a lot of commuters utilize this on-ramp. So we will have signage in place to ensure that they can navigate around the closure. Now, followed by our northbound on-ramp from Seal Beach Bridge, we will be closing down the southbound I-405 off-ramp to Seal Beach Boulevard, and that's only going to be closed for about 12 hours. So that 12 hours is typically from 10:00 PM on a Saturday night to 10:00 PM on a Sunday morning. And this, again, the same construction activities as the off-ramp, excuse me, as the on-ramp, that we're going to have to tie in with the new main line of the freeway, as well as the new configuration of the bridge. This portion, that curved portion, I don't have a pointer, but that curved portion right closest to the bridge, as you're coming out from underneath there, that also mirrors the existing footprint of the ramp that we're traveling on today. So again, that closure is just required for our crews to be able to get in there, grade that final roadway, pave it, and then open it to commuters. So unfortunately, we don't have a specific date for this closure, but we are communicating mid-August. And again, here are the detours for that off-ramp. And just as a reminder, not that you need it necessarily, but we do have nightly freeway closures, as well as ramp closures and freeway connector closures, at least six nights a week for the last couple of years, and we're anticipating that for the remainder of the project. So we understand that these daytime closures are certainly important to communicate with you, your city staff, and your community, to be sure that folks can have the information before they head out on their commute. Oh, one more. Can we go back to that slide? It's my favorite slide. And then in closing, we understand that construction is never a good neighbor, but we are in the home stretch. We're really excited, I'm sure, just as you are and your residents, that we're going to be done with construction on this project, because it has been a huge undertaking. But we understand that, you know, again, construction is never a good neighbor, and we really appreciate your patience. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions?
Just wanted to clarify, we still be able to use Old Ranch Parkway, is that correct?
Yes.
To get into Long Beach?
Yes. The connector, the 7th Street, or from Old Ranch Parkway, will be open. However, it will be closed as part of our regular nighttime closures.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open oral communications. Members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution.
Good evening.
Good evening, Saretta.
Saretta Building, Seal Beach. I would like to thank the City Council and the city staff for coming together and flying our flags. I think that when I go down Main Street and Seal Beach Boulevard and seeing the flags, it gives me a moment to stop and remember that freedom does not come free. And in my heart, I honor the men and women who have given us this freedom. And I think Seal Beach has set an amazing standard of reminding us all that we need to honor those people and those days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Deaton and councilmembers. My name is Mike Raffappa, and I live on the Hill. And I just wanted to give a big shout-out and a thank you to Joe Bailey and his lifeguard team for the junior lifeguard program that my daughter is part of. She's learning so much at that program about water safety and respecting the beach, and most importantly, the great job that lifeguards do. And my wife wanted me to point out that Mike Diller and his team are providing excellent service, and I had the opportunity to go down there the other day and watch them. And if you get a chance, it's a good, very good program for our city, and we really appreciate all the hard work you guys do. Thank you.
Mayor Deaton, federal staff, I wonder if thank all of you for bringing the Long Beach Bus back to Seal Beach. It makes things much more convenient for me. And thank other people in this town who take the bus. I thank all of you for bringing the bus back. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Deaton, members of council staff, South Eaker, resident. Wow, OC Loop. I'm with Councilman Sloan, who I saw this morning, by the way, on his way going to go fish on the pier. Awesome. I'm pro cycling, pro bike path, pro OC Loop. That sounds awesome. Number two, wanted to remind all of council, members of our community, that the Fish Fry, the 70th Annual Fish Fry, is this Friday, oh, sorry, Saturday and Sunday, the 19th and the 20th. So come on down, get some fish, get some brats, enjoy the music, have a great time. Perhaps an adult beverage for those most appropriate, and it'll be great. We're going to give away a car. So if you haven't gotten your opportunity to run, take it, please do so. The next item I wish to comment on as a resident was Item J on the calendar. It was shocking and troubling to discover that there was further movement for high occupancy tollings, and I would wholeheartedly support Resolution 6488. I had an experience this past Friday. I was driving along, and I don't have a great sense of direction, so I use navigation systems to just, I call her Beatrice, to just tell me where to go. I was going to San Diego, and I had not programmed Beatrice to avoid tollings. So before I knew it, I was on a toll lane, there was no way to exit, it snapped a camera picture, I went online to try and pay it, and it's a nightmare. And I don't want that, as a commuter, to be trapped in a lane, to be forced to pay, and then to be cited if I can't do it in a certain period of time. It is ridiculous. So if that's what's being proposed, that's insane, because I didn't have any choices. I wasn't aware of what I could do, and once I was in that lane, I was done. It was trapping. It was an awful experience. And as a commuter, someone who doesn't normally drive on those roads, it was really disappointing, because I thought, oh, where's the toll booth? I thought at the very least, there would be a way for me to pull out a 20. Hell, I had two rolls of quarters that I could have paid a bin. Nope, that's not allowed. They just snap your license plate. That is an Orwellian nightmare. No, thank you. Onto other happy things. It is my pleasure, honor, and privilege to introduce to you, who really needs no introduction, Deb Machen. I stepped down as Governmental Affairs Chair from the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I can think of no better person to take on the reins and to share with the city, the council, and staff the voice of the business community. So without further ado, Deb Machen.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Deaton, councilmembers, and Jill. Thank you for having me. Again, Deb Machen, I'm a resident here in Seal Beach and former chamber president. And just have a few things I wanted to comment on tonight for the chamber. First, the chamber continues to be in full support of National Night Out, and we're very excited to be actively involved this year, as we have been in the past, on August 5th. So we're very excited about that. The chamber also supports the Bicycle Loop Project, and we officially support the staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 6488. recommendation to adopt resolution number 6488, opposing high occupancy toll lanes for the I-405 improvement project. And no, I don't have a personal experience, and I wouldn't really go up against that one anywhere. And so that's my chamber report. As the co-chair, along with Seth, for the Centennial Marketing Committee, I wanted to take this moment as well to remind everyone that tomorrow midnight, that's July 15, is the final date for entries of, for the logo contest, the Centennial Logo Contest. And I want everyone to know, we've been kind of quiet about it, but it is going very well. We have a lot of entries and some really amazing work. We're very excited for our selection process to take place, hopefully this coming Thursday, and then for the unveiling of it to come. So anyone who is interested, my phone was ringing, and I was getting calls on my way in here. People are very excited and still sending in entries. So the information is all online. I think it is Seal Beach Centennial Marketing, boy, it's really long.
Seal Beach Centennial Marketing Committee at gmail.com.
See, piece of cake. Seal Beach Centennial Marketing Committee at gmail.com. And there also is our phone number to be able to call on any of the posters and the reports that are around town and the forms. So please do so, and we're very excited. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Barton, Old Town. I have a real short little thing to say. Saretta, you sort of stole my thunder.
That's okay.
What I wanted to say, first of all, was I don't want anything, at least not tonight. But I want to tell you, our Main Street looks like small-town America. Congratulations to everybody who's worked on our streets. They're wonderful. First of all, we got our streets and curves. Then we got our alleys. Thank you, thank you. And now we've got a cleaner pier, cleaner sidewalks, new lights on Main Street, flower baskets, and most of all, are those American flags. Thank you very much.
Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. The Toll Roads are sold to foreigner corporations. And yes, Joe is doing a wonderful job. Next year, he'll have my third grandchild in junior lifeguards. And don't forget, we're raising private money for SealBeachRoses2015.com. You can go on and you can check it out and see if you want to go make a large sum of money. There are seats to the Rose Bowl football game. There are seats to the parade. There are tailgate parties. So it's SealBeachRoses2015.com. And the, I gave out some letters to the city of Seal Beach, the council person, the city manager, the new attorney, Stephen Flowers. And I am requesting an audit on the staff time and expenses and the water and sewer funds. There are concerns of putting employees of the city in a water bill for part of their salary. There are concerns regarding the trash payments. Are we paying more for trash so that the city of Seal Beach gets a kickback from the trash collectors? When this thing about the water bill came up, I remembered that Los Alameda's were having the same discussion about six or nine months ago of no bids. We don't have any bids on our trash collectors. Other cities have bids. And which brings me to the question for City Attorney Flowers. If Lisa World has a private trash collector that's not with the city of Seal Beach consolidated, shouldn't they refuse themselves for voting for me for higher payments to the trash collector when they don't have the same trash collector? Shouldn't they be refusing themselves? Here, I'm paying more. As a regard, I'll have to pay for, I haven't. I'm making copies. I'm taking it around town. It's election. We have three people running for this district. It's going to be great. But shouldn't they refuse themselves? I mean, I don't get the vote on their trash collector. And I remember years ago, they got a better deal, and they got money back, too. But I never knew you guys were getting money back. What are you doing with that money? That money belongs to the people that pay the trash collector. Years ago, we used to get trash picked up twice a week. And then you, the city council, not this one, but years ago, voted to keep that trash collector, and we only get picked up once a week. But every year, you raise it. And now I've got the question. Give us an audit. If you don't want us to give us an audit, then we'll talk about it at the election. We need to know what you're doing down here. And it's the same thing with the tennis court. It's the same thing with the people over at the bed and breakfast in the police department. They had tires out trying to get people to rent a bed over there. It's the same thing with what I call the yacht club at the end of Edinger. Why don't we tackle the problems instead of taxing us more on trash collecting so that you can get money back? Can you tell me exactly what you did with that money?
One minute.
One minute. So anyway, this is going to be coming up everywhere I go, and I'm going to go. And as far as the bike trail, we have never resaw the people on bikes, and they're coming through our town. They don't stop. They don't stop at any stop signs. Somebody better tell that guy, they don't stop at stop signs. They don't stop at stop signs, Councilman Sloan. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close oral communications, move on to the city attorney report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple items to report. First, earlier this evening, the city council did meet in closed session to consider the matters that were on the closed session agenda. There were two property negotiations and a matter of anticipated litigation. No reportable actions were taken. Direction was given to staff and local council regarding those matters. Secondly, on a more personal note, I'd just like to say that this is not the first time I've sat in this chair with this council, but it is the first time I've had the privilege to do so as your city attorney. And I am both humbled and honored by the trust you've placed in me, and I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Steve. City manager.
Yes, Mayor. One item tonight. As you know, you have a consent calendar, item C, which is the approval of a professional services agreement for a tennis tennis professional, Brenda Danielson. Since that item was not pulled, I still want to note that it is an important item. And what I'd like to do at this time is, under my comments at least, turn it over to Jim Basham and have him introduce Ms. Danielson. She's here in the audience to introduce herself and also be available if the council has any questions. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Jim and welcome Brenda as well. Jim?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's staff is proud to introduce to you Brenda Danielson. She will be our new tennis professional. She has been a tennis instructor since 1999. She's spent a great deal of her time assisting the city of Huntington Beach and operating their tennis center program. So she has a great deal of excitement in her. She has a number of programs that she wants to move forward with, all for the betterment of the tennis center. So this evening, I'd like to present to you Brenda Danielson.
Hi. I'll answer any questions. I want you to know, I have a great deal of experience. I'm a tennis nut. So in addition to playing tennis, it's what I do, but I also am out in private clubs, public facilities. I think Seal Beach has a wonderful facility, one of the best that I've seen. I think the potential there for it to grow is incredible. My background, I was, as far as a pro shop goes, I was a Nordstrom buyer. Nordstrom gives you a lot of good grounds for being a great employee. I'm just excited. Every single person I've met in the city of Seal Beach and at the facility has just been beyond my expectations. I think I have a great team out there, and between my ideas and their ideas, you guys should all come out and see the place because it's going to be booming. I really feel strong about that. So I have a new logo I brought, if anyone's interested.
Counsel, if I could just add, of course, all of you know this is a fully-vetted process in terms of the RFP process. We did include, as the first phase in this process, candidates on our panel that were internal as well as external that had experience in managing tennis programs. The finalists in the second phase were required to take the council-approved Tennis Center strategic plan that was approved last year by council, and take all of those directives that you had approved to move that plan forward and address them with goals, which Brenda obviously did very successfully. And so want you just to confirm that it was a fully-vetted process. She was the standout finalist, which is why she's here tonight. And with your approval of the consent calendar tonight, we'll be issuing a press release tomorrow to introduce her as the new Tennis Center professional at the Seal Beach Tennis Center and welcoming the community, as well as the council and staff, to come and have a personal meet and greet with her at the Tennis Center this Saturday, on their way to the Fish Fry at the pier.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Just welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, council comments. Councilman Shanks, Councilman Levitt, Councilman Sloan, Councilman Miller.
I have one. The city manager has indicated that she prefers to have an annual performance evaluation, and I'm requesting that I have an agenda item for an annual review of her. And I'm proposing that we again have Jan Perkins of Management Partners facilitate that review because it made it much easier last year with her coordination of our efforts. So anyway, I'm requesting an agenda item for that. And then again, I'm asking the council, you all remember Jan Perkins from last year, and I think she was a good facilitator, so I'd like to see her do it again, plus she has familiarity with the city.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, well, you must have read our minds, because we already have it pre-planned to do that next meeting. So I think that'll, that's a perfect segue into that, so.
With Jan Perkins?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem there. That's one thing. I wanted to make a comment on one of Joyce's comments here on the letter that she gave to us on the audit. Joyce, I requested that. It's out with the auditors now. So I figured there'd been enough information and misinformation about that that we needed to get an independent review. So that's being done. The other thing is, I do want to thank everyone for the flags on both Seal Beach Boulevard and on Main Street, and they will remain up through the Fish Fry in honor of our veterans and all that the Lions have done for us to make it look really nice for the Fish Fry. Okay, and with that, we can move on to the consent calendar.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have one comment and correction regarding item C on the consent calendar. That is, the Tennis Center Professional Contract.
Yes.
Just a couple really minor clerical changes to one of the exhibits, exhibit B, which concerns the compensation of the consultant. Just two quick little changes that don't affect the substance of the contract, but we're just kind of making sure we get everything in there. The first is, the first vol. 2 point on exhibit B will now read, "City shall pay consultant $3,600 per month as a base compensation for services rendered under the contract," with the following additional language, "based on a minimum of 20 to 30 at-or's per week worked." So that's just a clarification of what that compensation is going towards. The second correction is regarding the fourth vol. 2 point on that page regarding the gross revenue generated by the pro shop. Payment will now be due by the 15th day after, this is the correction, after the close of the month during which the revenue is generated. Just to specify that, the payments will be due 15 days after the close of the prior month. And those are the only corrections.
All right, thank you for that. All right, with that, I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still move.
Please vote. That's 5-0 in approval of the consent calendar. There were no items removed from the consent calendar. There is no public hearing. There is no unfinished business. There is no new business. So that brings us to adjournment. We'll see you in two weeks.